All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you all here tonight for our Thursday, June the first, 2023 meeting on Northumberland County's budget hearing. Thank everybody for coming, even the ones in the virtual world, don't want to forget them. Our first item on our agenda tonight, we want to have a moment of silence for Keith Lewis and Taylor Hayden. Thank you. Our second item, we will open our public hearing. Can you hear me? All right. Thank you, Michael. And we'll open the public hearing here. Mr. Tadlock, I'll let you read everything for us here.
Yes, sir. The fiscal year '24 budget totals $53,451,771. The proposed budget does reflect a 14-cent tax increase on the real estate. The board cannot take any action tonight. By code, they have to wait seven days before they can take any action. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Before we open the public hearing, does any board member have any comments they want to make tonight?
You're just going to say the time limit?
Yeah, I'll set time limit here. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, before we open the public hearing here, anyone that wants to speak tonight will have a four-minute time limit here, so you are welcome to speak for four minutes. All right, so I'll open the public hearing. The first person on the list to speak tonight is Maurice Johnson.
Maurice Johnson, REBuild. We face a 23% tax increase. There's nothing like that on recent records at all. But it's not the only source of impact because FY '24 is also a year that kicks off the next property assessment. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, but in talking with real estate people, they suggest that the sales prices have jumped 50 to 75% since the last assessment. We can assume reasonably then that assessed values are going to jump up commensurate with that price increase. So we'll use 55% for this discussion. So what does all that mean? Let's say you own a property for $150,000 that's currently assessed at $150,000, I'm sorry, currently have a tax bill of $915. Under the new rate, your new tax rate would be $1,100. That's $185 more. But when you get assessed and your property gets bumped 55%, that's conservative, your property is now worth $232,000 taxable with a new tax bill of $1,744. Your tax bill went up $829 and you didn't even have to build a shed. Why is that? Stay with me for a second because we're going to talk a little bit about that if there's another scenario. But right now, why indeed? Wrong side. We have deserving teachers and bus drivers that are seeking a pay raise. And it appears that that pay raise has been achievable for at least the last three years. It also appears that NCPS is underspent in various student-centric categories while overspending in capital outlay and administration. Gaining clarity over the last three years has been extremely elusive. Not only do we, the people, feel deceived, but the teachers and the bus drivers should feel deceived as well. NCPS stands out amongst others in the state, deriving 64% of its funding from local taxpayers as compared to 47% for the rest of the state. Spends less of its money on instruction at 63.3% versus 67.4% in the state. This year's proposed per pupil cost total is $20,000 roughly, with $15,000 of that coming from local monies. There's a capital improvement budget for $800,000, yet the underachieving students' proficient test scores is unacceptable. We have a 29% long-term absenteeism. Expected student-teacher ratio is 11 to 1. That's ungodly. Is that really necessary? In a time when confidence in all levels of government are fading, any lack of transparency increases credibility gap. Where there's a credibility gap, there is suspicion. The school board budget raises a disproportionate level of suspicion. There is suspicion when a hamburger community is forced by the few to provide caviar dreams. So now let's get back to another example. Let's say we give a teacher who currently makes $46,426 a year, living in a home currently assessed at $280,000. That current bill is $1,708. With a new assessment bumping it to 55%, that home is now taxed on $434,000. The new tax bill is $3,255. 5% raise is $2,321 minus the $1,547 plus-up. So we basically give a teacher a raise, or anybody in that income bracket.
That's your time. Time's up.
I got two more pages. I got a recommendation for you. Freeze the education budget at FY '22 numbers. Perform and publicize an examination, a forensic examination of the school board's books and establish a task force to look at policies that can make things better. We've repeatedly looked for clearance or clarity. There isn't any, and it's long past due for the schools and the county to seek cost savings efforts.
All right. Thank you. All right, next person. Next person to speak is Cheryl Johnson.
So what happens when we raise real estate taxes? First of all, it affects the homeowner. If your home is valued at $350,000, a 14-cent increase of the assessed value would cause the county taxpayer approximately $500 more per year, and that's without a new assessment. What else would increase, what else would an increase do to our community? Stores, restaurants, other local establishments will also have to pay more for goods and services in order to absorb the tax increases, so we all would pay even more. Inflation is another consequence. Taxes drive inflation. Inflation-driven prices means that consumers buy fewer items that cost more. When businesses can't remain profitable while keeping prices down, they are at risk. The elderly have fixed incomes. 50% of Northumberland County residents are over 60 years old. That's me. Young couples, single parents can hardly make ends meet at as it is. With the increase in inflation over the years, we can barely afford to buy food now, not to mention clothes and other everyday essentials. An increased tax makes it less desirable to live in Northumberland County. People are going to move away. We're chasing people away from our county instead of drawing people in. Landlords will pass along this increased tax to their tenants. The renters could be hit harder than others. The cost of a historic tax hike is compounded by the needs of the local economy. Consumers will spend more but will take home less. Has anyone actually considered the extended impacts of a historic tax increase? This increase will really hurt our community. Thank you. Cheryl Johnson.
Next person would be Jim Penny.
Jim, 125 River Hill Road, Eastville, Virginia. Several weeks ago, I stood up here and brought to the attention of board supervisors as well as anybody in the audience that happened to hear my discussion. This was regarding the Northumberland County Public Schools Per-Pupil Expenditures Report, which is required by state statute to be delivered and made public the 1st of April. It was not. On the 11th of May, I contacted Dr. Wargo, and she referred me over to Tara Booth, and roughly two weeks later, I finally got it. What does it say? Well, for starters, let's start at the bottom and work up. 11,070 students are projected for next year based on the ADM. That correlates to $19,997 per student. $20,000, Maurice said. $3 delta. Come on, folks. This is out of control. Another question that has occurred to me is how many out-of-county students are the taxpayers paying for, and how much are we getting back from either other counties or the parents of those? The reason I ask that question is that there's not a line item in this report that states that. It shows state per pupil amount, sales tax per pupil amount, federal per pupil amount, local per pupil amount, which I'm assuming is, Northumberland County being $14,855 per student going into next year, and then the total per pupil amount is $19,997, as I said. I'd love to hear the answer to that. Mr. Tadlock, would you mind distributing this to the board members so they have a hard copy? There's a copy from Mr. Jett there as well. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Next person to speak is Bob Kane.
Mr. Chairman, fellow supervisors, my name is Bob Kane from First District, and my comments will be of a more general nature. I stand in opposition to the draft 2024 Northumberland County budget that will require a 23% increase in the tax rate. My objections are twofold. One, it's highly inflationary, and two, I believe it's unjustified. It's highly inflationary. The dollar amount of inflation is 16.6%. The annual national rate of inflation in 2021 was 7%, in 2022, 6.5%, and through April of 2023 is 4.9% and declining. In sum, a 16.6% increase is over twice more than the known or anticipated annual national inflation rate for the period 2021 through 23. With respect to it being not justified, I have two comments. First, in the board chairman's own words from the local newspaper, quote, "We put that number out there so people know what we are faced with, and then we can make cuts," unquote. In other words, this budget has not been thoroughly scrubbed, being a technical budget word, scrubbed. Number two, the nature of budget submissions, the nature of budget submissions by program offices is to add as much fluff, another technical budget term, fluff, as they think they can get away with in anticipation of cuts by approving budget officials. I would submit that in general, this is what has occurred with this draft budget. My recommendations: Between the board and the county administrator's office, this draft budget be scrutinized and reduced to levels more in line with current economic indicators, resulting in no or reduced tax rate increase to support the budget. And I note again from the local newspaper, the county administrator has already implied that he has some suggestions for reductions in this draft budget. With respect to the reserves and the Davenport Company study, as I understand it, the purpose of the, quote, "undesignated general fund balance," unquote, is related more to cash management, to avoid having to borrow money to account for out-of-sink revenues and expenses, than definitive budget requirements. My suggestion would be to do a historical analysis to determine the average percentage over time of the actual expenditures required to avoid borrowing rather than the somewhat arbitrary 20% recommended by Davenport Company. Thank you very much. I got copies for...
All right. Thank you.
Well, one last thing. I just noted from the paper that apparently Lancaster County is having no rate increase this year.
All right. Our next person to speak is Robert Haas.
I want to do a little background. The county budget now is over $50 million. That's for a county that only has 12,000 full-time residents. That's a little under $5,000 per resident that you're all spending, and I'm not sure we're getting good value for that money. You now want to increase this budget by $5 million plus. That's $2 million, $2.5 million for the school budget and $2.5 million for yourselves, so you can't play the blame game. Both the school board and you are responsible for this $5 million increase, and I can't find where there's justification for it. The administrative costs went up supposedly 3/4 of a million, and the non-denominational amount went up for another 3/4 of a million. That's money that's administratively used to run the county, I understand, but where are all these increases coming from? I'm not sure I understand that. The other concern I have is for some accounting recommendation, you're increasing the undesignated fund by $1 million. It's already way too much. The average nongovernmental private sector contract would usually have a contingency fee, which I equate to that, but that would be 5% to 10%, not 20% or 25% of your whole budget, and you never use more than $2 million of that money. And by the way, as far as money management, you're getting horrendously low investment income from the money that's sitting in that bank account or wherever it is. The bottom line is, I have been following these budget hearings and this budget process, and there was never any increase of 14 cents mentioned until the last hearing, and I think that was just a ploy, and I use that term politely, for you to get the 7 cents that you actually really have advertised for, and to think everybody's not going to understand that you bumped it up so you could bump it down. I don't think we're that stupid. In any event, we want, maybe we are. In any event, I don't think there is anything in the school budget or the county budget that requires any increase, and I haven't seen anybody on either of those boards to justify in real hard numbers what those costs are. So I don't think we need to increase the budget one cent. Thank you very much.
All right. Next person to speak is A.B. Campbell.
My name is A.R. Campbell, Wycomoco Church. Thank you for the opportunity to present my thoughts tonight. Most everything I got, I gleaned out of the local newspaper in the last two weeks. I didn't do the deep dive that a lot of these people have done, and I appreciate, obviously, they've done some serious heavy lifting, but I want to say, I'm going to try to keep this short and sweet, and I want to apologize upfront for stating the obvious, but sometimes the obvious needs to be said, and I think this is one of those times. I, again, I first learned about this real estate tax increase reading the local newspaper, and the real estate tax increase that's proposed is way beyond excessive. I was shocked to read it. So I want to apply a little bit of my ninth-grade math, practical math, business math, to see if it still holds water. The proposed increase from 61 cents to 75 cents looks to me like a 23% increase. That's unbelievable and unacceptable, in my opinion. Even the increase that was mentioned before that, as this last gentleman said correctly, that higher rate had never been heard of until, I believe, last week, but the prior increase from 61 cents to 68 cents is 11.5% increase, which is also unacceptable. And I'd just like to say, you know, at your 75 cent rate, the taxes on their retirement home would go up something like $922 a year. That's unacceptable. I ran through the proposed expenditures and estimated expenditures, and it says that general government administration is expected to go up 27%. Public safety, 16%. Public works, 27%. Parks and recreation, 25%. And education, 11%. Well, I don't know how education can be so low and government administration can be so high, and I would appreciate an explanation for that at some point in time, if possible. And again, I'm baffled by the government administration because, to me, what the name implies there, that's the cost of running the administrative offices of the county. I don't see how in the world they could do the 27% increase. And so I would also like to say, why is the answer always to raise taxes? Why never cut spending? Why is the solution, why is the solution always to spend more money? Taxpayers are being hammered by high inflation, financial market and investment losses, and reduced or fixed incomes, in the case of retirees like me and my wife, and taxpayers should not be required to pay such large real estate tax increases.
That's your time, sir. All right. Next person to speak is Roland, I can't make out your last name, but it's 1032 Indian Valley Road.
Hi, I'm Roland Rice. I live at 1032 Indian Valley Road. I only have one question for y'all. Why do our taxes have to go up every so often? And I mean, this is outrageous. I live in a home, you get rid of prices, so I got to get out to county. That's all I got to say to you.
Next person is Ovanda Rice.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ovanda Rice. I just want to forfeit my time and pass it on to someone else that has more stats because I've been listening to the statistics, and I want to hear more about that before I say anything, okay? Because I really don't live here, but I have property here, so that's my interest.
Okay. All right. Next person is Francis Robinson. Okay. Thank you. All right. Next one, I think, is Phil, not sure, but 77 Sandpiper Circle.
Phil Gates.
Gates.
I'm Phil Gates, 77 Sandpiper Circle. I, first of all, want to acknowledge the fact that there ain't no such thing as a free lunch. If you're going to have services, you've got to pay for them. The way the government pays for them is with taxes. So I acknowledge the fact that we've got to have taxes. But it seems to me that it's strange that the general administration needs 26.9% increase while the judicial administration needs 6% increase. Public works, 26.9. Health and welfare, 7.1. Something's wrong. We need health and welfare. We need, we don't need more administration. We've got all the administration we can stand, and far more than we can pay for.
All right. Next person to speak would be Bruce Craig.
I'm taking a little bit of different tact here. First of all, my name is Bruce Craig. I live at 228 Greenway Place in Oyster Cove between Edwardsville and Avalon. I've owned property with my wife here in the county for over 25 years. As you are aware, the population of Northumberland County is among the top 10 counties in the entire United States, and in its proportion of residents 65 and over, of which I'm one and I guess many in the audience are, it is second among all counties in Virginia. Only Highland County, which is way up there in the Northwest, has a higher proportion of elderly, a much smaller population. While a significant number of the age population are come-hers, a number were born, raised, and worked here before retirement. Many are on a fixed income, and while some have investments, for most of them, their biggest investment is their residence. The lowest-income elderly residents are eligible to apply for property tax relief, but most are not. No doubt you have read that our neighbor Lancaster County does not plan No doubt you have read that our neighbor Lancaster County does not plan to increase its property tax rate. How is that? In part, it's because they have chosen to collect taxes on meals, cigarettes, and lodging. The board was invited to join the other northern counties to collect a cigarette tax several years ago and chose not to do so. To my knowledge, they have not considered meals tax, and with the rise in food and other labor taxes increasing the cost of night out for those working, it may be understandable. However, since your consideration of a cigarette tax, and I was here when you did that, the county has seen a large number of short-term rental businesses. These are commercial enterprises, increasingly purchased and operated by out-of-county residents. I live next to a short-term rental that advertises a one-night stand, a stay at $450. Okay. It's a, it advertises at $450 a night and over $2,000 a week. Okay, a week seldom passes during the entire year without a rental there. Sometimes as many as six cars show up. I'm not here to complain about these visitors to our county, but I am concerned that while other jurisdictions collect up to an 8% lodging tax on their short-term rentals, we do not. By my conservative estimates, one part of the county is overlooking the collection of as much as a half a million dollars in income from short-term rental, non-resident visitors. While their cost in collection and enforcement of a lodging tax, the net gain is significant. In short, any increase in property tax has implications for low-income elderly and working families. While some increase may be unavoidable, I urge the board to find new sources of income, such as I have mentioned, which are less burdensome to its residents. Thank you very much.
All right, next person is Gillum Haney.
Did you say Glenn Haney?
It's Glenn Haney, it's 1179,
Twinseater?
Twinseater Court, Twinseater Lane.
Yes, good evening, Glenn Haney. I own a property there at 117 Twinseater, there in Fairport. I've actually never done this before, so I'm excited to be able to stay up here and tell you my opinion of what's going on, and it might not be the best thing that you want to hear, but I'm going to tell you anyway. So, all this, in this room, we all know what the problem is. We just have to deal with it in a different way, okay? So, there is simply not enough industry in this county to help support a revenue income on the taxes, okay, that you guys are wanting to have approved for this budget year, okay? And it's been a problem now for several years. So the burden is being put upon the residents, the households, okay, the homeowners, right? There's only 12,000 people in this county. 1,467 are students, right? There's 5,127 households, according to the census data, right? It's simply a situation that is going to eventually go off the deep end. We are on our way to a disaster, okay? I don't know who remembers 15, 20 years ago, all of a sudden, all the waterfront homes, all the waterfront properties went up in assessed value three to five times, okay? We had just bought one, all of a sudden it went from $70,000 to $189,000, just like that. That was, that's the start of the cascade. Playing around millage rates, playing around with reassessments, blah, 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 here we are again. We got another reassessment coming next year, we got this miller rate this year. When is it going to end? When is it simply going to end? The people that have education here aren't staying here to work a high-level job here because there isn't one to be had. So they're leaving. Now, that tax burden is being put on everybody else who's staying, the 5,000-some households, all right? So we need to find a way to trim it down, slim it back. It's going to be a disaster coming down the road. Trust me, trust me, okay? We are a very small rural county in Virginia. We're not in a population center. If we were in a population center, I could understand, all right? The administrative overhead needs to be slimmed back. Capital expenditures need to be slimmed back, all right? What you're doing to the poor waterfront property owners is horrible. It's absolutely horrible. With the amount of tax that we do pay already, the potential that we're going to be paying if this is approved. The non-waterfront property owners have their share as well. They will also see a significant, significant increase. But those poor folks that live around the waterfront, they, oh gosh. Like somebody said, you're pushing us out of the county. I mean, we should sell and go somewhere else where it's much, much cheaper. We are not a northern Virginia county. We are a rural farming county with very small industry. Thank you.
All right, next person to speak is Shay Haney.
Hi, I'm Shay Haney in Bay Harbor. I'm a daughter of two educators in Texas, right? I came here years ago, and I love this place. I love the people here. I don't understand what's happening with our taxes. If, in any other industry, if I make a budget and I have this, like, general slush fund, okay, when it has a 30% increase in one year, somebody's going to want to itemize that, right? The IRS won't take it like that. How are we supposed to just hand over all this money and it's some general fund, we don't know what it is? But more than that, the average income here in Reedville is $54,000 a year per household. If we're spending $20,000 per student in the school district, that concerns me because the average in Virginia is 12,800. The average, the national average, is 16,500. And in Falls Church, Virginia, where we have the highest income, right, the average income there is $145,000, they're spending $18,000 per student. Is there something wrong with our students? Is there something wrong with, what, what's happening here? In addition, we saw a RFP, a request for proposal for a new school board building. And, I mean, is that where the extra million dollars are going? Is there a reason that we can't itemize where the money's going to come from or where it's going to go to? Why is it just this, this general slush fund? That makes it smell funny. Thanks.
All right, next person is Jim Dyes.
I'm Jim Dyes from 186 Hammack Lane in Fairport. Couple of observations. When I was teaching, I taught for a little while, it was about 30 students per teacher. Somebody was telling me, just a while ago, 11 students per teacher. And interesting. Also, just an observation also, my social security is not keeping up with the, isn't going up as fast as the budget here. The, I think you've got the cart before the horse. Given that you're going to reassess everything next year, and that's maybe a 50% increase in tax assessments, and why not wait and see what that brings? Because you've got a slush fund of $10 million already you're sitting on, not earning much interest. So I think you're getting the cart before the horse, and you're, you need to wait. Also, if you compound the 50% increase next year in tax assessments with a 23% increase in taxes this year, tax rate, you know, that's compounded in 84%. Now, a lot of people assume that if you spend more money on schools, you'll get better schools, and that's not necessarily the case. Right now, I think in this year, they proposed a 14.8% increase. Last year was 9.3, that's a school. A year before that, 5.9. But it turns out that throwing money at schools doesn't give you better students and better results. After a certain point, and it's a lot less than $20,000, I think this study was in 2018, once you got over $8,000, you could throw money, more money at the schools, 8,000 per student, but it didn't give you better results. But what does happen is, if you take money from the families that have students and give it to the school board, now that does give you worse results. But giving the money to the school board does not give you better results. So it's a, it's a losing game at some point, and I think we've reached that with the school board budget of $20,000 per student. The more you take from the parents and the student, the worse they're going to do, but it doesn't add anything to the school board's effect, anyway. Also, on your audit for the county budget, it said you spent 13.5 million dollars as audited last June 2022. What I can't do is, you can't reconcile that with the school budget, best I can tell anyway, and I cannot find the audited school budget. It seems like to me, they ought to have a budget, and they ought to have an audit on it each year, and it ought to be readily available on the website, and I can't find it. I don't support the tax increase. I don't think it's needed. I run a lot of apartment developments. We do a budget every year, and I've never seen and never had to have increases this big on any of my developments that I work on. Thank you.
All right. Next person is Alan Haney.
Yeah, how you doing? My name is Alan Haney. I'm an out-of-towner, okay? But still, I don't appreciate what's going on with what's, all these, all these tax increases that's going on, I really don't. It's going to make it hard on a lot of people, awful lot of, awful lot of people. Yeah, I own, I own, I own property here, yeah. Me and my, me and my two brothers, we own a piece of land at 117 Twinseater Lane. So it's going to, it's going to make it hard, it's going to make it hard, and so... He's got to, he's got to be another source of income coming into this county, other than just, you're taking it out of the people's pockets. You know, tax money out of the people's pockets. There's got to be another source of income, you know? Whether it's, you know, someone said, mentioned industry, or restaurants, or businesses coming into the county, that, you know, maybe you can take, you know, some, some sales taxes or something from them and make it work. That's the only, only thing I know to make, to make it work. So, I mean, I'm, like you say, I'm an out-of-towner, I'm not as smart and educated as some, some of you guys in this room, you know, I'm just an average guy. So I'm just voicing my opinion, so thank you.
All right, next person is Eileen Seraphin.
Eileen Seraphin. Thank you. Yes, good evening, members of the board. My name is Eileen Seraphin. My husband, Urban Johnson, and I are, I guess, come-hers. Trying to use local, you know? I grew up in Stafford County, though, so when it was a one-traffic-light town, and don't want to live there either. And we just sold our house in Fairfax, so when I, and I just heard of this 23% increase. And I do want to thank all of you for what you do. I've been in a few different roles where I've just helped planning commissions and other things, and I know your job is not easy. But now, being here, I have children that are being educated, and full transparency, hearing these school numbers is alarming. We pulled our kids out of Fairfax County schools, and we bought our house to be able to send them to public school. Here, we are happy to pay our taxes and support children, as we would anywhere, but we put them in private school. And what I'm even more alarmed to hear is 20,000 ahead, when I pay 13,500 to an independent private school in Irvington. So I'm all about, you know, I'm a businessperson. I used to be a government employee. My husband and I bought here to retire here. The good news is, we have not committed. And if things keep going this way with the types of increases, we don't mind, hey, if it's a, you know, we bought when the prices were down, we're happy to pay our fair share. Hell, we paid a lot of taxes in Fairfax County. But the problem is, and this is the cautionary tale, I agree with a lot of things that were said tonight, so I appreciate the folks that actually took the time and have the statistics. But at the end of the day, if we can't afford to live here, I will be on a fixed budget. Even now, we've all, you know, facing the inflationary struggles. But I think the frustration I'm hearing tonight is transparency, it's accountability, it is justification. And listen, now that I'm here, and I'm not stretched, and I've got a child, my kids are going to Christchurch next year, so full transparency again. We're making sacrifices. I'm taking money out of my retirement to make sure they get the education you need. However, I have to say, we did choose Northumberland because of its good schools, compared to other neighboring counties. I'm very proud, and I'd love to be involved in how to make some of them better. I am fully supportive of our teachers, our bus drivers, our folks that are on the ground, even the lunch folks. However, they're the ones that have to pay the bills. Like I loved highlighting, it's not just property owners, it is rent that will increase. You can't even find rental units here. I mean, there's such a low inventory, and if taxes go up for those folks who are investing, they're going to pass it down. I mean, they're already getting, you know, high cost because of the low, you know, the high demand and low supply. There are some basic economics that are going on here, and I think that's where, you know, 23% is shocking to anyone. And listen, I get it. Our taxes are low when I compare to Fairfax, but that's the reason, I don't want to be there. And I think all the people who have, you know, escaped other sort of metropolitan areas, other jurisdictions where, you know, people want to live, be able to raise their families affordably, you know, we make a choice. And I love this county. It actually, you know, I'm actually glad to be here. So the point is, I guess, in just kind of my general highlight is, we are not supportive of the tax increase. I am happy to help and contribute to what some efforts, and I'll follow the folks later. I'm the one who called you, Mr. Haney, a couple of years ago about broadband. You know, I have, I have an MBA, and I have experience in just jumping into numbers. I live with numbers. At the end of the day, though, we need to translate those to living and to really justify for folks what's going on here. And I think that would help you too, right? If you guys really need money for something, then I don't think people are, you know, denying that, okay? But thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. All right, next person is Hoyt Whelman.
Yeah, I'd like to apologize for signing up for this. I thought I was signing to just be seated. I didn't do, I didn't do, so I appreciate you. I'm not the only idiot here.
Thank you.
But it's been very interesting. I came because I thought there would be a chance for the I came because I thought there would be a chance for the Northumberland Public Library to make itself known as far as a place for investment by the community. That's why I'm here.
All right. Thank you, sir.
I relinquished my time to.
All right. Next person is Bill Graves.
My name's Bill Graves, and I live on Smith Point Road down in Reedville. A chairman and board members. I appreciate everything you do for this county as far as taking care of us. But as an individual who works at Walmart and is also a licensed loan officer here in the state of Virginia, I think it's time to give back. We're going in the wrong direction. Give you an example, this morning I was working self-checkout at Walmart, and this individual came in, and she looked, she was in pretty bad shape. And she only had $40 for what she needed in the store, and she ran up a bill of $75. And I pulled out my debit card and paid the balance. I think giving back is more appropriate than taking away. Thank you.
All right. Next person would be George Abbott.
Yeah. I have nothing to add from what was said tonight, so I'd like to yield my time to the first speaker. But I have a lot to say after this.
There's a lot to say. A lot more than is on these three pieces of paper here. We have discussed a lot of things, and as I mentioned, some folks were asking, how does the school go up 10% and something else goes up 20%? 20%? Percentages aren't the way you want to look at that. It's the actual dollars that go up. That's what you're going to end up paying is in real dollars. So how much a particular slice of the pie grew doesn't really paint the full picture. It's tough. It's really tough. We've, we've been looking for clarity, thank you, that was, for three years, and we haven't been getting it. It shouldn't take a PhD to navigate websites that should be very obvious. It shouldn't take a PhD to figure out what's actually going on with the money that we're paying. It shouldn't take a PhD for any of that stuff. Anyways, I look at these numbers, and all I can think of is, love you guys to death, but throwing money at a problem that was sourced from a government entity never fixed that problem. This is not the way I go about doing it. So I do have a lot of statistics I could quote, but, you know, you guys look like you're pretty interesting people. I don't want to see your eyes roll back. Anyways, I don't want to take up too much of the time that's been granted to me. I'll sit back now. Thank you.
All right. Next person is David Jennings.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, citizens of Northumberland. My name is David Jennings. I live at 631 Timberline Drive. I've been a resident here for a little over two years now. My wife and I retired up here. We like the area. We've experienced growth rapidly in the Richmond metro area. We like the peace and quiet and tranquility. A quick question, do we have any teachers in the audience tonight? Excellent. I want to thank you all for this work that you're doing because I am totally impressed with the kids I see in Northumberland. Working understaffed, I'm sure, as most places are, underfunded in other places, like other places are. You're doing a good job. The sheriff's department is represented here tonight, and I come from law enforcement myself. But there's some things you've got to look at. You've got a depressed economy in this county. You have a large retirement community in this county. Living on fixed incomes, living on investments that are going down. They're still going down. And by all economists that I've listened to, it's going to get worse. And now, you're going to lay an additional tax burden on the citizens of this county that can't carry the weight. They're going to back off of other things. You've got empty businesses. You need decent industry. There need to be jobs here. When the kids graduate from high school, they need to be trained to be able to go into a workforce and do something here. They don't need to pack up and move to Richmond or move to Northern Virginia. So if you're having a problem with these numbers, you've got teachers here, I'm sure will be willing to keep you after school and address your economic education. Thank you very much.
All right. Next person is Rosalie Coltrip.
Good evening, board members. I'm Rosalie Coltrip. I've lived at 1921 Monday Point Road for, since 1962. And my career was with the Northumberland County Health Department doing soil evaluations and issuing permits for residential real estate development. And I've seen a lot of changes over my career of 30-plus years. I've seen the demographics shift from a Garian community to more of a residential waterfront community that offers employment for the building sector and the service industry sector. And to build upon what previous speakers have said, this area doesn't really have anything to offer youth when they graduate from high school. They have to leave to find a good-paying job and a career with advancement. There's nothing wrong with having a service industry type of job, but sometimes you have to make sacrifices to live in a place like this where it's beautiful, peaceful. You have your community around you that you love and appreciate. Sometimes it's a sacrifice to live in a place like this. So I'm not in favor of a 23% real estate tax increase because it puts an undue burden upon the people that have chosen to stay here and live here with lower-paying employment unless, you know, they're lucky enough to find a position with the state. But in comparison to that, I did work for the state for over 30 years, and my salary was frozen, probably a third of my tenure. And the increases were very miniscule, maybe 1% after a four-year freeze or a 2% increase. So that is more in line with what I would see a salary increase look like for teachers or the sheriff's department. I'm not in favor of a huge increase that is proposed. Thank you.
All right. Next person is Mike Bryson. Mike Bryson? He was outside. All right, I'll come back to him.
Hello. I'm Mike Bryson. I just wanted to know what's going on because I, I see this, we're raising our taxes again. They're doing another adjustment now, going out for us. You know, I've been working since I was 14. That's 60 years I got going. I got problems. I got Social Security, they give me a raise, and then they raise my Medicare, take that away. You know? And here we are. We get more raises than something, we take it again. What I want to see is flat out, I want to see things on numbers. I want somebody to report it to us. Tell us, this is where the money's going. This is what we have. This is what we use every year. This is getting old. So I think it's time that you guys started looking and started telling us what's going on. Give it to us. And thank you for your time.
All right. Our next person is Sharon Bryson. All right. Thank you. All right. Next persons are David and Dorothy Panel.
We're David and Dorothy Paul. We reside at 1205 Yucamica View Drive over in the Palmer State area. I have just two or three comments, and I don't know where they'd fall under here. First off, broadband, I'm not even going to go into it, but that just went up into the air. I mean, we were told last year that it was going to be in our jurisdiction by last fall. We haven't seen the wheels of a truck anywhere. The second thing is, is on the school, I'm maybe a little confused. The lottery, I thought the Virginia State Lottery provides money from that to go to the schools. Is that not correct? I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I've never, I don't know. And the last thing I just want to touch on real quick is the personal property tax. You want to increase that. As you know, President Biden wants us all to go to electric cars by, what is it, 2030? Whatever. And I hate to see what a price for a car is going to be then. And, I mean, we're just, we're just putting ourselves into a melting pot here. It's just, I'm not going to elaborate anything more, but what these people have said tonight is absolutely true. Thank you.
All right. Next persons are David and Mary Heath.
Yeah, I'm another one of those idiots that signed up. I thought I was, I thought I was on the mailing list. But after hearing what everybody said here, I got a question. What are you cutting? What are you going to cut and send that out in the next seven days to least that list or somebody? Put it out on the website, what you're going to cut in the budget? You know, you can't just add it up and keep adding to it. Something's got to come out.
All right. Next is Robert and Sylvia Garbus.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak here. Listen, I came from an area up in Pennsylvania where this type of tax increases were going on continuously. And what it did mostly was drive poor people. It affected the poorest people in the county, the worst, because it drove them out of their homes. They couldn't afford to pay the taxes. Now, we have all suffered under this awful increase in, you know, the cost of everything. And I understand that the county has that same issue. I mean, they, you know, we've all, well, what do we do when our, when we can't afford a salary? We cut our expenses. And I'm not seeing any expenses cut. Not that I can, you know, tell because, you know, budgets are what they are. You don't see everything that's in there. But I'd like to know how, what this group of supervisors have done to cut expenses and maintain it because we have to do that. We can't afford to do what we were doing. And I'll tell you, I'm going to come here. And the first time somebody told me, oh, you're going to come here. I said, yes, I came here. Because I came here because this is a beautiful place. It is just like where I grew up, up in Maryland, and I love being here, and I love the people. But if, you know, if you guys were talking about 8% or 10% tax increase along with, you know, the increase in costs, normal costs, I would say, yes, we could all accept that. And.
All right. Hold on.
The idea was smush, man. I mean, give me a. Where's that money going to be spent? That, I mean, that just, that boggles my heart, you know? So, you know, I don't want to see the poorest people in this county drooping out. And by the way, and I think, I think the supervisors do this. You want to see taxes due up? You do not want to see Omega Protein lost here. You do not want to see that. That's $25 million on the payroll and 250 well-paid individuals who are spending their money here. So I don't work for Omega or anything like that. It's just, I'm saying, you know, I was in economic development in North America. My job was to bring people into the counties that I worked for. And so, you know, go out, locate the people that come here, and what is all, you know, we're the three X, right? Forestry, fishing, and farming. I mean, that's basically it. And our largest employer is Omega. So, you know, can we increase that? And someone was talking, and I'm sorry, somebody was talking about, you know, increasing the jobs down here and things like that. It's tough. It is tough to attract. We are, you know, you leave Washington DC, you're, you're in Richmond quicker than you can get here. And that's tough for, you know, companies to deal with. So, you know, I know that's it, but if the supervisors were talking about a reasonable increase, I'd say, you know, probably half this room would be empty. But 23% is outrageous, and I thank you.
All right. Next persons are Joanne and Galen Gills.
Hi, I'm Joanne Gills. I live in Heathsville on Steamboat Lane. I appreciate all that you do. I appreciate all that our teachers do. I think everyone involved in education with our children, we can't afford to pay them what they're worth. But you can't get blood out of stone. And I, I really hope that you don't approve this budget.
I'll yield my time to the next. I don't have anything to say. This has not already been said.
All right. Thank you. Next person would be Mal.
Luke Kirk.
Luke Kirk. That's right.
Thanks for your time, and members of the board. I'm just going to talk from my heart. Okay? I'm going to come here. We bought the property in '01, 2001. It's 22 years ago. And if, and if the board members are familiar with the rule of 72, if 72%, you divide that by the growth rate, and gives you the time, the number of years that it takes to double the cost of what you're paying for. So if I take 72 divided by 23, it's about three years. Okay? And I've lived here 21 years on property. Three into 21 means that my taxes are going to go up seven times. Seven times. So all you people that don't have 21 years yet, be prepared because that's exactly what the proposal is that you're putting on us. So that's my first point. The second point is, my wife and I don't use many services. We don't, we really don't. We're grateful for the police. We're grateful for you guys. But it's, it's, we don't directly use them. Except I want to talk one little incident, very minor, to make the point. Except I want to talk one little incident, very minor, to make the point. My wife and I like to garden. And the school, in prior years, used to use the, I don't know the proper term, the handicap children, and they would, they would put the seeds in the thing, we would buy them. My wife called the school this year and wanted to buy the tomato plants and stuff. The school couldn't tell my wife whether they were going to have the program or not. Took them a week. Took them a week. And they came back and finally said, we're not going to do it. Were you going to do it next year? Don't know. But my point is, I'm getting less service, just a little tomato plant, for a hell of a lot more money. And I apologize for using that word. Thank you for your time.
All right, next person is, next person to speak is Lorraine Smith. I think she's over on the other side. Lorraine Smith?
I think she's on the other side.
Yeah.
Somebody getting her?
Mr. Chairman of the Board, my name's Lorraine Smith. I live at 90 Lake Road in Lotzberg. My father was a police officer for 20 years at the DO, at the Washington Navy Yard in DC. He also did 22 years in the Navy. When he decided to move down here, in, back in 88, property taxes were really low. This was a really nice community, still is a nice community. The people are wonderful here. But we need someplace for our children to go after school and to stay out of trouble. We need some businesses to come in here, whether it be a bowling alley, whether it be a little arcade game, something to where our kids can stay, keep themselves out of trouble during the summer, or even during the weekend. That's my, that's the problem I see as a parent, and as a single parent. Now, my children are grown now, and I live on my own. I've lost my father last year. But we still need our police officers, we still need our schools, and they need to be funded a little bit more than what you're proposing. Now, as far as our real estate taxes, every year I've seen our real estate taxes go up. I've seen our property taxes go up. But we're not getting anything in return. Why is that? Why, why should we all suffer? Why should our kids suffer? We shouldn't. I was an over-the-road truck driver. Because of somebody's negligence, I lost my career. Now, I work as a delivery driver in Tappahannock, because there's new jobs here in Northumberland. And I get a minimum wage job. And I'm even struggling. But I'm making do with what I got. I don't have extra income coming in. My investments have gone into the toilet. Excuse my French. And all I see is people saying, is here in the county, saying, give, give, give. Here, every time I turn around, last year, as of July 1st, the state turns around and says, oh, if you have an econo, if you have a vehicle that gets more than 25 miles to the gallon, you're charged a highway usage fee. Well, it seems like, okay, I try to get an economical vehicle to save gas, to have a little bit of money, so I can put food on my table, but yet it's being taken away from me, so I have to do without. Where's that helping anybody? It's not. But if you can, but I oppose the 23% increase. You know, try and find another solution. Make do with what you got. That's what we have to do. We have to make do with what we got. You should too. Thank you for your time.
Next person is Kathy Elson. Just 11 Cedar Lane.
I was just following the crowd too, but I was...
All right, okay.
It's been off the roof.
All right. All right, next person...
I'm going to take my minute.
Oh, all right, come on.
Sorry, Richard. Kathy Elson, Cedar Lane, Reedville. Not prepared to speak, but a couple of things keep running through my mind, and I know I, there's not a person in this room or probably in the country that's not feeling a pinch at this point in time. But I wonder, sitting here, if there's more that we as citizens can do to help alleviate some of the problems without having to just write the check. You know, we have volunteer ambulance, we have volunteer fire department, we have Friends of the Northumberland County Animal Shelter, we have a private library, and lots of different little organizations. And while they may all only contribute drops in the bucket to the entire budget, it's a drop in the bucket, and you get enough drops. If there are things that you as a board of supervisors can think of, start up some more citizens committees, let us help. And I also think about, I heard a couple of people say services. Well, yeah, I too am a come here, but I've been here for 20 years, so I'm not the newest to come here. But we don't have that many services. We don't, by and large, there are a few exceptions. We don't have running water, we don't have sanitary, we don't, there are a lot of things we do not have. However, the earth can only take so much. So at some point in time, all of our properties, we may not be here, but all of our properties are going to need those services. And the county's going to have to provide them. So if we're this, and I don't want to accuse you all of being frivolous, but I'm listening to all of this, and the few numbers I've heard about the budgets, they're reading more like wish lists than budgets that have had the fat cut out. So I hope you all have big butcher blocks and you get to work.
Thank you. All right, next person is Dave Conlin.
My name's Dave Conlin. I live at 542 Cott Creek, Bay Quarter Shores. I am a come here, and I respect that. But I, you know, I'm not usually one to come to these meetings, but this definitely brought my, drew my attention. I'm just, I'm encouraged by my fellow concerned residents and citizens. I think it's an important matter. I agree with a lot of what was stated, and just to reiterate, I think this may be more of an issue of like economic development, and finding other solutions to bolster the economy in this county. In my adult life, I've lived in rural counties. I've had the privilege of, because of work, living in different parts of the United States, and now I'm here with my family. But I've lived in rural areas, and I've seen the benefits of really tapping into a strong economic strategy, which alleviates the burden from the taxpayer. I will also just say too, something else that stands out, I'm just looking at the numbers, and when I work for an international multinational organization, I feel like it might also be an upstream issue. We're talking a lot about the downstream consequences of this tax, which is, is just seems reckless on paper, or maybe just poorly thought out. But what draw, what I was questioning is the upstream process to get to this point. Just in my experience in business, if a budget like that was presented to leadership, I don't know if those people would still be working with me. And I say that with utmost respect, because it's a challenging process. Anyone who's been involved in budgeting and forecasting, and especially in the accounting world, it is a, it's a, it's a very challenging process. However, I just feel like more, more attention can be put to it. So if there's a need to get the right people to do the right job, then I would encourage the board of supervisors to possibly hire an outside third-party auditor. I would way more prefer to spend $150,000, $200,000 on an accredited auditing to identify the issues that are happening upstream, that are causing downstream issues to the point where we're here now. So I think that is a, a possibly a more responsible way. That sounds like a lot of money, but companies do it all the time. They, they, they pay now and they save money later. I think that can help the school board. It can help them really understand fiscally what they need to do to put forth an accurate budget to the board of supervisors. It'll hopefully make your jobs easier, working with them, and also serving your citizens. And again, we just thank you for your time, and just ask you to really look at this in a thoughtful, honest way. Thank you.
All right, I don't have anyone else signed up on the sign-up sheet tonight, but anyone else like to speak here tonight? All right, come on up, ma'am.
Lynn Stewart, Lotzberg. I hadn't really planned to say anything, but I, I would like to reiterate what everyone here has said tonight. The transparency of the school board budget, and honestly, let's just identify it as the elephant in the room. This has nothing to do with whether or not we admire the teachers and the administrators of the school board and the schools, because we do. But it's the elephant in the living room. There is no way, unless you're willing to spend literally eight hours a day as a non-accountant and a non, I'm a citizen who's interested to find out where the money is going. The only way right now that I could figure out to find out what actual expenses were against the budget, which is something that we've been asking for for two years, show us the expenses actual against what your request is, so we can see if it's reasonable. The only way I figured out to do it was to read the auditor's report. It should be on the website. You can find a check register, you can find an expense report, you can find a revenue report, but what you won't find is you won't find them under Budget and Finance on the school board site. You will find it under Public Notices, sometimes as an attachment to an agenda. It shouldn't be that hard for citizens who are interested to find that information. And there shouldn't be a reason that we have to read the entire auditor's report to find out where the school, the school board and the, and the school system spent the money. That should be something that we can all work on together. I admire what the teachers do, I admire what you do, but the elephant in the living room is a 23-point whatever budget for this coming school year when 1.5 million was left on the table last year. It doesn't make any sense. Get an auditor, get a forensic examiner, figure out where the money is, figure out where it has gone, and then we will be in a position to know where it should go in the future. Thank you.
All right, who else wants to speak?
Come on up.
Come on up, ma'am.
I have my hand up.
All right, well, come on.
Shelby Brooks, 813 Cone Harbor Drive. I'm in District One. Mr. Brand knows me. I'm not just a citizen or a resident of this county. My roots from my family come from here. I, I can drive you to Fleaton and show you the house my father was born in. I did not move to this county. It's been about eight years now. I've been teaching, this is my ninth year, in this county schools. We are the second-largest employer in this county, next to Omega. And majority of our teachers live in this county. More, majority of our staff does. I'm not going to stand here and tell you there might, there are no problems. That's I'm not going to tell you. But I will tell you this, this is a few things I've heard tonight. There are not 11 students per teacher. I have teachers in this room that will tell you that. I will tell you as a teacher at the high school, sometimes I'm at 24 or more, and they have to take it down, because it's by law, it can only be so many. I will tell you this, from 2008 till three years ago, most years I didn't get a raise at all, and then the raises I did get were somewhere around 2, 2 cent, 2%, which wasn't even inflation. It wasn't until three years ago that I actually got a step increase, which all teachers were supposed to get. From the time and life, teachers have always gotten an increase, along with a step increase. This county has done a good job of trying to make adjustments, for our teachers particularly. We have actual English and math positions this year, I'm worried we will not fill. We have the lowest, and I know this for a fact, because I did my research, we have the lowest tax rate in the northern neck. I'm not saying I want a 23% increase, but what I am saying is, we are going to have to have an increase, because if it's costing us more, it's going to cost them more. I'm not saying we can't go through and try to cut things, but I do know that if it's costing me more to live, it's costing you all more to make sure that everything gets done. There's a couple other things I want to point out in our budget this year, especially for the, for the county, for the school system. We have paraprofessionals who are only making around $10 an hour, starting 10 to 12. They are trying to increase that to 15, because we cannot keep paraprofessionals. They come in for a week or two and they leave. So they've had to bump up the, an increase in the salaries for that. The second thing is, we can't keep bus drivers, because we are the only county in the area that does not have them as full-time employees and give them benefits. And that is something that has caused from COVID. If you are paying $15 or $16 an hour at McDonald's, you've got to pay the staff, our support staff, a decent livable wage also. And I'm not saying that that is something we have to bear. I also know this, I have been coming here since I was born in 1965, and I have not seen economic development in this county. The only thing I have seen, besides the food line, is a Family Dollar and the Jollers Generals. I can't even, I, we have new teachers who come here, and we have to send them to other counties for, just for housing. This is not just a school issue. This is a county issue. The, our budget in general is a county issue, and it's not just our school board, it is you all too. I'm asking you, I know, just give me one second, I'm wrapping it up. There's one more thing I want to point out. Schools are not the same. I had, we had a student this, this weekend who was shot. There are guns... There are guns with our students. I don't want to have my kids or me be shot, and security is an issue now that we have to fund. And I know you all don't want to fund it, but it's a, it's a fact of life today. Okay? Thank you.
My name is Karen Pika, I'm 288, Stillwater Drive, Wacomico, well, Heathsville. And I am a PhD, and I still can't figure this shit out. So, um...
Pardon your French, huh?
Excuse me, pardon my, my French. Um, I'm happy to volunteer, so one of the things that concerns me is if you haven't had transparency in the budget, either something's being obfuscated, or they don't know what the hell is going on, and both are very worrisome. So the fact that you have to dive through, where's the young lady? That had to dive through all those audit reports, you know, we can create really easily a spreadsheet that has all the information, we can post it publicly, we as citizens. I will volunteer my time. I am happy to volunteer my time to go through every single detail. I have been on different boards and commissions, I've lived in different counties, I've done budgeting as a professional. Um, I'm not the smartest person around, but I like numbers, and I'm pretty good with Excel. Don't ask me to do pivot tables. But I am more than happy to sit with anyone and work through anything as a member of this, we've lived here, um, over 20 years, I don't even know how long now, but it's, it's God's country in my book. This is God's country, and I want to keep it that way. I do not support a 23% increase, people can't pay that. And yeah, if you raise McDonald's wages to 15, guess what? I can't afford a hamburger. Not that I eat at McDonald's. But the point is, everything goes up, and so while I completely support people have to have cost of living adjustments, I saw the, the health costs increase in that budget. I looked through every, some of us looked through every single line in that budget. We saw the health costs increase, right? That's happening to all of us. So there are things that may have to increase. I can't for the life of me figure out why we need over a $50 million budget for this county. I'm done.
All right, anyone else like to speak? Come on up, sir.
Good evening, Board. My name is Gary Dickens, and I'm a chemistry and physics teacher at Northumberland High School. I joined Northumberland High School six years ago, um, mostly because it allowed me to stay on the northern neck, uh, to continue teaching without, uh, having to move. And I got to Northumberland, and there is this amazing pool of students that are being grown here, that are, the intelligence and their abilities are beyond the pale. As a chemistry and physics teacher, I get those students through my classroom, and it pains me every year that I have to ask them to look beyond the arc of Norfolk and Richmond and Fredericksburg to find a job. These are scientists, these are engineers, these are doctors and lawyers, and they have to go elsewhere. So one of the themes of tonight has been economic development beyond those three F's here in Northumberland County. There are kids here who would thrive with technical work, if they could get it here, uh, but instead, you know, they're working service jobs while they get through college, and then they're gone. Anyway, I'd ask, it's not a solution for today or this year, but over the next five years, you all look for economic development opportunities, so we can keep the best and brightest here in Northumberland County. Thank you.
All right, anyone else like to speak?
Hello, Board. Hello, Board. My name is Dr. Crockett, and I'm here to speak with you all again. 374 Lewis Lane, Heathsville, Virginia. I am so glad that Mr. Long indicated to me that this meeting was gonna be tonight, because by me working in Estes County as an exceptional needs teacher at this point, sometimes I miss Northumberland. I'm sorry that I'm not in Northumberland as an educator. I was very saddened when I had to leave Northumberland to go to Estes County, which they have a lot of problems there as well. However, I said before you all to say this, one of my major concerns about Northumberland now, we're talking about the increase in budget and the 23%, but I'm very disturbed about mental health, and how we are hearing that individuals in our counties and abroad are having trouble in life. Our counties are not providing the services that we need, and it disturbs me. We don't have, I mean, Community Services Board, they can do so much, but we have to offer jobs that would be beneficial to individuals that are mentally disturbed. And it hits us all across the board. It doesn't matter if you're black, it doesn't matter if you're Caucasian, it's hitting all of us, and it saddens me. We can make all the money in the world that we want to make, but when you're losing loved ones and friends and relatives because of suicide, or because they're mentally disturbed, that's hurting. And so we, what we have to do is do better to help each other in these areas. And everything that all of you beautiful people have said tonight is excellent, phenomenal, but we need to think about our mental health. And this is all I have to say. Thank you. And one more thing, you know the great artist James Brown? Everybody knows James Brown, right? And he said, please, please, please. I say that to you, Board.
All right, would anyone else like to speak? Would anyone else like to speak? Come on up, sir.
My name is Lance Marston. I'm at, uh, 219 Long Point Road, District One. Over the past 50 years, I'm now 91, but 50 years, I've worked for NASA as a budget person. I have been in international business development, and worked in 30 countries overseas on privatization. In hearing all the comments today, and having been an observer of this Board's dilemma and conundrum with its budget, I've come to the conclusion that the time has come, where we need a good, solid examination of how this coun, how this county budgets. We have seen issues with transparency with the school board, we've seen issues of inflation, unexplained inflation in the cost of doing business by government in this county. My suggestion needs to the Board is that we have a Citizens Advisory Group made up of so much talent in this county, of three or four people with solid budget experience, to come up with some recommendations as to how we can reform the budget process in Northumberland County. I think that would be a major step in providing the kind of comfort that all of us taxpayers want to see, so that they have more confidence in the capabilities of our Board of Supervisors, and in the process that is so fundamental to the well-being of this county. So my suggestion and recommendation would be the creation of a Citizens Budget Advisory Group to report within the next year as to how we can reform and make this budget more transparent, more accountable, and based on performance. It seems to me that one of the sound principles of good budgeting is having performance standards for all of those agencies and participants in the budget process in Northumberland. Thank you very much.
All right, would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? Do we have anybody on the other side who wants to speak to? Do we have anybody online tonight that would like to speak? Do we have anybody online in the virtual world tonight that would like to speak? Have anybody on?
I think they all showed up.
Anybody in the virtual world tonight would like to speak? No one.
That is the first. Thought we would certainly have some on.
They're all here, they're all here.
Yeah, they're all here. How many got online? 28 online. All right, since we don't have any one else that wants to speak? Did you say Tom had one?
See what, anybody on the other side?
Yeah. Nobody on the other side wants to speak? All right, since we don't have anyone else that wants to speak, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Seven days, we have to advertise the, uh, budget.
People already advertised.
I mean, we've already advertised. It's seven days before we can make a decision, I mean.
And we're not making a decision then.
Anything else on the agenda tonight? All right, I have nothing else on the agenda tonight. Any Board members have any comments?
Well, as I stated in, in the previous meeting, I will not vote for 23% increase.
And as I stated, I voted only to advertise, certainly not going to support a 23% tax.
And I also am not going to support a 23%. It was only to advertise it.
I'm a taxpayer too.
I only wanted to advertise it, but I will not support 23%. We are gonna make some cuts. We are investigating what we need to do for audit now. So the process has started. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, ma'am. Second.
Got a motion, second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Ladies, gentlemen, thank you all for coming tonight.